Thank you for your patience as we began our Fort Mill Town Council regular meeting, Monday, September the fourteenth, 2020. It is about six oh five. We apologize for the delay, but as with anything, technicalities seem to be our main of our existence these days. If you are viewing us online, thank you so much. This is our called order. We will stand for a pledge of allegiance and then Councilman Huntley will give our invocation. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, as we gather here together representing our town, we first give thanks for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us both individually and collectively. We pray that you would give us the wisdom to carry out the items of our town in a proper manner. These things we pray in our holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank council and staff for their continued efforts to allow us to meet in person but be socially distanced for the health and safety of all. Thank you for your efforts to protect each other. I appreciate it. So, we do have minutes. The minutes of the August twenty-fourth, 2020 Town Council meeting have been placed before each of our council members. Do we have additions, changes, or deletions?
Madam Mayor, I move that the minutes of the August tenth meeting be changed to include the motion made by Councilman Huntley to instruct staff to see to write a new ordinance that can review and get them back as close as possible to the fees that were established in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. We have a motion on the table. Ms. Cook, did you have an additional item?
Not for that one. For the past last meeting on the twenty-fourth. I just think it would help for clarity, staff, if we'll put, we had information and discussion, but we don't have in there what came out of it or what the actions were. So I think it'll be helpful if we put in there a statement that the millage decision will be provided to staff on X date in order for the budget to review. I think we need to start having an action to what the information is, so when we look back, we'll know or know what to expect, when to expect the deadlines.
Okay. Council members, we have a motion before us and a recommendation. The recommendation requires no vote. It is a recommendation and a request from council to include actions in the minutes of our meetings so that we have a record, a written record, of those items that council makes a decision on that will ride along with those minutes when we get them. Davy, can you make sure that staff can do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On the change, it does require a vote. We do have a motion, and right now, I do not have a second. I have a second from Ms. Heemsaw. Okay. As we are continuing to work in person but virtually as well, I will ask each of you how you vote. Mr. Shirey, welcome back. And how do you vote on the motion that's on the table to make that change to the August tenth minutes?
In favor.
Thank you. Mr. Hams?
In favor.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
Favor.
Mr. Huntley?
In favor.
I also am in favor. Ms. Cook?
In favor.
And Ms. Heemsaw?
Favor.
All right. That is unanimous decision to make that change to the August tenth meeting. Thank you very much. We will move to public comment pursuant to section. Mayor?
Mayor.
Yes?
This is Barry. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good. You still have to vote to approve the minutes from the August twenty-fourth meeting.
Okay. So sorry. Thank you for catching that.
Sure.
Okay. Do I have a motion in place for approval of the August twenty-fourth minute?
I've made that motion.
Ms. Heemsaw has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second. Okay. Mr. Shirey?
To approve.
Mr. Hams? Mr. Moody?
Approve.
Mr. Huntley?
I approve.
Ms. Cook?
I approve.
Heemsaw? That's a unanimous vote to approve the minutes of the August twenty-fourth Town Council meeting, and we have made a request that for future minutes of meetings, that we include actions taken by council in that meeting. Thank you so much. Pursuant to section two dash forty-six of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of the council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. To maintain social distancing, citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give their comments.
No, ma'am. We did not have anyone sign in.
Okay.
Proclamation.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We do not have anyone. For those of you that are not present, we do not have anyone that has signed in for public comments. Thank you for your attention. Presentations. Presentation number one is a proclamation for Constitution Day and Constitution Week. Very important for our council, for our community, and for our country. Proclamation reads, whereas September seventeenth, 2020, marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-third anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law nine-one-five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Gwen Savage, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Fort Mill in the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth as Constitution Day, the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution that they had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the Town of Fort Mill to be affixed this fourteenth day of September of the year our Lord, two thousand and twenty. I have signed the document, and it is here, and I believe we have a guest that will receive this. And your name?
Holly.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I will, if I can get out of my chair, put on my muffler. Get muffled. Anyone think it's a great idea? Thank you so much for the work that's invested in ensuring that we remember that it is indeed a yes, that we have a Constitution to guide us and to protect our freedoms. So thank you for everything that's done to bring this into being. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, I think it's very important to recognize the words in the proclamation. It is a privilege to live here and to abide under a Constitution that looks out for the benefits of all. Thank you very much. We have no old business items, and now we will move into new business items. On new business item number one, we will be doing a public hearing first of an ordinance to adopt the budget for the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning October the first, 2020, and ending September thirtieth, 2021. Let the public hearing be opened.
No one signed up.
We have no one signed up, so let the public hearing be closed. Now, we will have our first reading of an ordinance to adopt the budget for the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning October the first, 2020, and ending September thirtieth, 2021. Shontae is our expert. Do I have a motion?
Any motion?
I have a motion from Councilman Moody?
Second.
And a second from Councilman Huntley. All those in favor of the motion to open this item? We have unanimous? Yeah. I don't know. We don't have to do that. Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I cover all the bases, Davey. All right. Shontae, what you got for us?
Okay. That particular ordinance is our tax millage ordinance. And basically, the change to it has to do with the rollback calculation in terms of the tax rate. The ordinance has been modified to include a statement that the Town of Fort Mill's millage for the upcoming taxable year, which is January one through December third, first, 2020, and our fiscal year ending September thirtieth, 2021, will be set at seventy-five point two millage.
Okay. Quick question. Item number one is to adopt the budget. Item two is on the tax millage, but in reality, we probably ought to approve the millage before we do the budget? Or because it seems backwards to approve the budget if we haven't approved the millage that's in the budget? On our agenda, it's got the budget first and the millage second. So I just want to be sure what we're voting on, because you brought up millage and the first one's budget.
I think maybe they may be in.
Reversal.
Reversal.
Okay. Just want to be sure.
But we need to then go back and do another motion. Barry?
I think it does not matter truly which order you pass these two today, but when you go back and have second reading, it does matter. And then to add to that, the motion that was put on the floor and is open today or right now is to open the item. There was no motion to approve, so somebody needs to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. I noticed that when I started to take a vote, and all we had done was ask to open it. So, Mr. Huntley, would you entertain the motion for approving this item?
I move to approve.
Mr. Moody, would you second that?
Favor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Barry. Okay. So we have a motion on the table. Lisa, your comments are good ones. Davy, can we ensure that that order is correct in our final vote on the budget, please, sir?
Shontae, where are the millage parts? Since we just got the book, where is it found in our book to see the wording of the millage?
The millage ordinance, I most apologize, is not in your book, but you will have them tonight. I will email them out.
Right.
There are two ordinance there.
Right.
The millage ordinance, and then there is the actual budget ordinance.
Okay. But the millage is listed in our budget book somewhere.
Yeah. It's in there.
It's in the blue sticker one.
It's in the presentation that we will be giving out tonight as well.
Sorry, I was looking on a notebook.
It's in the notebook too, but I can't remember. Here, I will know where.
Okay. Has everyone had an opportunity to kind of scan as this is a reproduction of information that we arrived at on our first draft of the budget itself? Do we have any additional questions?
With our rollback over percent, or the fourteen percent that we're dealing with?
The millage ordinance does not include any of the growth opportunities that we had before. At last we talked, you all discussed, that we would go with the seventy-five point two percent rollback and not exercise any of your growth restrictions.
And we did talk about this at our last meeting. We did actually, I believe, take a vote that we would pursue the option that kept it stabilized as we were working with our budget for the entire town to hold our costs for at least six months as we got through the COVID period of time in which revenues would either show us some action that we're not going to get the revenues we expected or planned for, or we were. At this point in time, with the pandemic and the changes that are happening to our economy, we had no crystal ball of determining what may or may not come in. So we were working to ensure that we stay afloat and do everything possible to be ready once we see what those revenue streams would produce. Does anyone remember it differently?
That's how it happened.
Thank you.
Yes.
Again, to the point earlier, though, staff, it'd be great if we had that in the minutes of the direction that was given, so that when we go back, take say that the senior I just is coming in real quick and hard and heavy, so to be able to have that reviewed. For council, on page six of our notebooks we were getting given, at the top of that is where it lists in the document for us.
It's part of your narrative that you will, from what you're saying, Lisa, if any rather large or detailed recommendations is made, it should be.
Any direction given by council to staff.
Right.
Coming as a recovery. Need to be documented. We all have a hundred items on that one time, and only other options, watch the video back.
All right. So we have a motion on the table to approve the first reading of an ordinance to adopt the budget for the town, and we have a second. We've had some good discussion on how we're proceeding and why. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments prior to the vote?
Davy, where do we stand on strategic plan? I know the goal is to eventually have our budget go in lockstep with where our strategic plan is. Where do we stand with that process?
Yes. We've put together, staff put together a strategic plan based on last year's budget, and we're in the process, based on COVID nineteen and the challenges we've had, to update that plan for this next budget year. So we're going to be adding some verbiage to that to beep it up if you feel.
And from our previous discussions, we said this is a budget that we're going to review mid-year. I think the agreement between staff and council was end of, or sometime in March, we would have revisit where we are with the COVID concerns?
The plan is to revisit the entire budget mid-year to see where we stand, and hopefully revenues will come in in a favorable way so that we may be able to make some additional adjustments to the budget.
I think Ms. Cook's trying to establish what date would we be expecting to review that?
March.
Much ado.
March fourteenth.
Yes. So by the last meeting in March, we would hope to see a revenue announcement, a review of the budget, and some type of improved strategic plan. Is that correct? Is that commitment?
That is committed.
Thank you. Everyone, any additional questions? Hearing none. Again, the motion on the table is to approve new business item number one. Mr. Shirey, how do you vote?
Favor.
Mr. Moody?
Approve.
Mr. Hams? Mr. Huntley?
In favor.
Myself. Lisa?
Let me tell you something.
Trudy?
Favor.
That is unanimous vote to approve new business item number one. New business item number two, first reading. We will start with a public hearing. I will open it for ceremony only, as we do not have anyone signed in or present to speak to it, but I would like to follow the protocol. Public meeting is opened. Public meeting is closed. First reading of an ordinance to raise revenue by setting the tax millage for the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, for the tax year ending December the thirty-first, 2020, and for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve or deny this item?
Make a motion to approve new business item number two.
Okay. Ms. Cook has made a motion to approve, and Mr. Shirey has seconded that motion. Shontae? Any additional comments?
That particular budget item has to do with the budget itself. No, no, number two is setting the millage, and I apologize, but I thought that's what we were talking about.
Earlier?
Uh huh.
Mm-hmm.
Number one has to do with the budget ordinance itself.
And that's what was approved, the budget ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
So, the tax millage ordinance actually represents at this point seventy-five point two millage.
Hmm. Which keeps us?
Which keeps us revenue neutral.
Yes.
For this particular year.
Yes. And that's.
Down from eighty-six mill.
Down from eighty-six mill.
Does everybody understand that it's revenue neutral and that it's for a period of time that we determine what our revenues will be based on COVID?
For six months.
Six months.
And just so you further know, we had to perform that calculation this year due to the fact that every five years, reassessment occurs.
Right.
And when that occurs, state law dictates that we perform this calculation, and in doing so, is how we arrive at the seventy-five point two.
I think that's important to note. Very good information that we're required to do reassessment every five years. This was that fifth year, and that caused us to have to look at what do we want to do to remain neutral or otherwise take action.
But for clarification to what Mr. Moody just said, in six months, we will not be reviewing the millage. It's stuck for a year. We cannot change it as the budget cycle changes.
Once a year, once you vet that millage. Because it's because of when the property taxes go out. See, property taxes go out once a year, and so we have to let the county know what our millage piece of that total tax bill is, so that when they process taxes, it is accurate.
Yeah.
And council has the ability each year to make that determination as to what its desire is for the millage.
So just clarifying, even though we're doing a review in six months, this will not change, but other items in the budget could potentially change.
The review is basically to see where we stand and if we can restore from the.
Make a budget amendment.
Yes.
But the actual millage can't be amended.
Actual.
So just make it as simple as we possibly can.
Correct.
This is a year decision. It can't be amended. Everything else can.
Right.
Thank you. All right. The motion on the table is to approve business item number two, which is the revenue by setting the tax millage. Do we have any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Shirey, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Moody, how do you vote? Mr. Hams, how do you vote? Mr. Huntley, how do you vote?
Approve.
I approve. Ms. Cook?
Approve.
And Trudy.
Approve.
All right. We have a unanimous vote to approve new business item number two. Shontae, thank you. All right. New business item number three. First reading of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Four, Finance and Taxation, Division Four, Development Impact Fees, so as to revise the development impact fee discount rates for the town. Chris Pettit is our subject expert. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer this item to our next morning meeting.
Have a motion to defer? I'll second your motion. And the reason being is we still are processing information on how to get to the discount rates that council completely can agree to. I don't have a problem with having discussions on it, but I have a problem voting it in. Does anyone have another motion? Hearing none. Mr. Pettit, do you have anything you'd like to bring to the table?
Madam, I'm happy to discuss the ordinance that we've prepared for discussion this evening, but also happy to answer any questions you may have about it or certainly defer to the next meeting.
My concern, I believe, was voiced earlier. If we defer this to the next morning meeting, will we be in jeopardy of not getting this approved prior to the budget needing its final approval?
It does require two readings, and so it would probably go until after the budget unless council did a special call meeting, but the special call meeting would have to be, I think, a week following first reading, six days or seven days in between. So it would likely fall until after the budget, but the budget ordinance, it would not be impacted or need to be changed by what council's decision is on the impact fee.
Mm-hmm. It's like smoke and mirrors. We've been, as a council and staff, reviewing the information on a review of the impact fee structure that was required, and it changed some of the numbers. When we, as a council, made a determination that we wanted to see the figures that would come out of going back to a particular point in time, it was very difficult because that road had been paved over. So we're searching for the right methodology that council can agree on what the right number is to go in that block. Our options certainly, you know, could have impact on residents, small businesses, large businesses, so it's a fairly critical decision that we go about making. So I'd like to make sure we do it properly. Anybody else like to come in?
I agree. One of the comments that came up recently also, Mr. Pettit, is if we could have a comparison to neighboring.
Communities.
Communities, municipalities, at least maybe York County, Tiki K, potentially Indian Land as well, if we have it, just to see where our rates fall.
How about the public impact fee? Am I correct on that?
No, they do not.
Well, Indian lands are county, not a structured municipality.
But York County doesn't have an impact fee either, though.
I think they've been working on one, have they not?
They've studied it, but they currently.
They have it patented.
Why don't we look at Mount Pleasant? That's a high-growth area. Can you pull that?
We could.
We could certainly try and pull a couple of representative comparisons with what we will try to run communities in this area, but certainly we can reach across the state and some folks that have impact fees similar to ours, category-wise, we can try and pull some comparisons for you before your next meeting.
I think it would be important, and I know it's hard, it's like trying to find a needle in a haystack, because there's nobody like us, but we are special. But I do think not just pulling people that have the same structured impact or categories, but looking for municipalities that are similar in size and growth rates and location matters to me. You know, I could see a Greer. I could see your recommendation from Mount Pleasant, but I would like for us to be thoughtful, you know, not just come up with somebody else.
And my thought of the neighboring communities was more so that is a small business going to pick Fort Mill over Tiki K Indian Land or not pick us because of impact fees being significantly higher?
Be any business. It doesn't have to be small.
Right.
You know, I think we need to know where we fit in the charges we enact that would prohibit or inhibit businesses from coming to Fort Mill or homes being built. And I think those are two interesting avenues that this one issue impacts. So.
So our next meeting is on the twenty-eighth?
Mm-hmm.
That we're deferring to them, is that correct?
Next morning meeting.
Yes, and then we can schedule a week after that and do a special meeting.
So the week of October fifth would be a special calls meeting.
Okay.
And the effective date would be around October first?
Well, it would be after the special call meeting, because you have to have two readings.
Yeah, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, we typically ask for some separation between second reading approval and the effective date, simply to allow staff to communicate out to developers what the changes. simply to allow staff to communicate out to developers what the changes would be and to, uh, alter our internal documents to appropriately implement whatever council's, um, selected discount rates would be.
And what timeframe does staff usually ask for?
Uh, I mean, a- a- anything would be helpful, but, uh, certainly a week would, would, um, allow us to appropriately alter those documents and at least reach out to, to, uh, uh, our development community to alert them of the change so that, you know, they're not sending in checks for the wrong amounts and things of that nature. Uh, can make that a more smoother implementation process.
Gee, I bet they've been wondering that for the last several months. Um, so you councilwoman with the calendar, um, looking at deferment of a decision to the twenty-eighth with a lot of review, uh, prior to that, then a called meeting on October the fifth, and then I believe Mr. Pettit just asked for an additional week before we actually enact. Is that correct?
So.
That would be.
Has us, um, having it effective on October twelfth.
Yes.
Which would be our first scheduled meeting.
We, we, we can let that happen.
And does that fit, Shontae, with our need to approve the budget? It does not.
I'm saying that, what you're saying is fine to do.
Okay, I'm sorry, I took the note. I mean, no, it doesn't. All right, the motion on the table is to defer this to the twenty-eighth. Uh, the plan would be to have a call meeting on October the fifth and to enact such decision on October the twelfth. Your vote will be only on the motion on the table to defer this decision and vote until the twenty-eighth.
Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, please.
Um, I think, I think you're exactly right. Vote on deferment. You're not, you're not tying yourself to the, the timeframe or the timeline. I think a week is not adequate. I think, I think you need to at least have a fifteen to thirty day period for effective date. Um, I just, I think that's more reasonable and, and certainly from a notice standpoint to the, to the developers and so forth. I think that's appropriate.
But I don't think you have to decide that today. Okay.
Between the second vote or between enactment of the. After the second vote, thirty days?
Right, af- after, after the, the second vote, after the second reading, then, and a- and at second reading, you can determine when the effective date is. Um, but I would not be, you know, honed in on October twelfth at this point. I don't think that even needs to be in the discussion, nor does it need to be in the motion.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Mack, it's not in the motion. It is an effort to get ourselves a little more structured at having dates when we make decisions.
So given that, do we need to have the meeting on the fifth? Special meeting just to discuss a week after? Or can we wait and just discuss and have that second reading on the twelfth with our regular scheduled meeting?
You forced me to pull up my calendar.
Well, that just depends, that just depends on how quickly y'all want to get this done. But I don't have any problem with you having a special meeting from a legal standpoint. I just think you need to give the, the general public and the, and the developers who are impacted by this adequate notice. And I just don't think on something like this, oh, and I, I know Chris can do it in a week, but I just don't think a week is, is adequate, uh, in terms of legal notice.
I don't disagree with you, Barry. My only comment was, um, staff was directing, because of budget concerns, to have a special call meeting the week of the fifth. But if we don't need to for budget reasons, we could just handle it at our regularly scheduled meeting on the twelfth.
On the twelfth.
Yeah, the twenty-eighth and the twelfth, they are two readings.
We didn't decide.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep, all right, so the motion on the table would be to defer, uh, this particular item until the twenty-eighth. Ms. Seamsaw, how do you vote?
Um, I'm ready.
Okay, Ms. Cook?
In favor.
Okay, Mr. Huntley?
In favor.
Okay, I vote in favor. Mr. Moody?
In favor.
And Mr. Helms?
In favor.
And Mr. Shirey?
In favor.
All right, we have a unanimous vote on new business item number three to defer until the twenty-eighth. New business item number four. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I, I don't, I would like to go back before we go any further with the new business items. Um, during the public hearing has brought to my attention that, um, for transparency purposes, I needed to provide an overview of what the budget would be for, just for the public that's listening in. We didn't have anyone here to speak.
Oh, the presentation.
And so.
Please move forward. Yes, we will consider this information.
All right, thank you. Um, I am pleased to, uh, to provide to you, Mayor, and, and members of council, the recommended budget, uh, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. Um, the information in this, um, packet is the same information I was discussing during our budget workshop. Um, and I will go through it, um, for, for public purposes. Um, our budget, recommended budget for this year in total, uh, is for eighty million dollars, three hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. That includes general fund, uh, grocery revenue fund, stormwater utility fund, capital projects fund, hospitality tax fund, accommodations tax fund, fire protection impact fee fund, municipal facility impact fee fund, parks recreation impact fee fund. Um, and these will, we'll go through these separately as we go through this presentation. Um, the next slide, please. Um, this is the same information that I provided, just in a, another format, visual format, as to where, um, budget expenditures are. And we'll begin with the general fund. Um, again, for the general fund, the total of the revenue is, uh, twenty-one million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is a decrease of two hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, which is a one point one percent decrease from the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget. Uh, contributing factors, COVID-nineteen. It, COVID has drawn us a major curve ball this year. Um, and based on that, um, the, the revenue projections over the next year, staff wanted to take a very conservative approach to our fiscal year budget. Um, we, as you mentioned to earlier, Mayor, um, this is, the, the process for this budget is to operate on a, um, providing our services that we currently provide to our residents and customers. Um, but we are being very fiscally responsible and taking a, uh, conservative approach, and we will review after a six month period to see if, uh, staff's projections on revenues were, were off. Um, but as we move through this budget, uh, now, we are again taking a conservative approach. So, um, impacts driven by the following, um, property taxes, building permits, uh, state revenue sources, um, business licenses and state revenue. Back on park recreation tourism. Um, I provided the, uh, amounts there, uh, the projected amounts that we're looking to receive. But it's still a, um, about a thirty percent decrease from what we expected from last year overall. Um, again, we're, we already talked about the property taxes and rolling back the, uh, millage rate to seventy-five point two mills from the eighty-six mill. Um, so next slide, please. Um, so for the total projected expenditures, twenty-one million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Um, it's in ba- it is in balance with projected revenues. Um, included in the budget, um, personnel, uh, you would be four full-time positions in the SROs. Those, um, school resource offices are actually being funded by the state. So we are, um, we're adding four new positions, but we're not funding their salaries. So they have very good use, and that's a, a great program that we're taking part in. Um, it does absorb fully ten grant-funded positions, which is nine firefighters and one police traffic officer. They come due, so we had to include, include those into this fiscal year budget. Um, what the budget does not include for this year is any salary adjustments for town staff. Um, we had to take a hard look at, uh, again, being fiscally responsible as possible. And that had to, in, in order to bring together a balanced budget, that was something that had to be looked at and, uh, not included in this year's budget. Um, some i- other items that were included, though, um, were items that were necessary, and we had to continue to provide the services that we are currently providing to our residents and customers. So the police department CAD mobile enterprise, uh, project, uh, that system has become obsolete. So we have to, we have to change that out as a must. Um.
What was that, thank you?
That's the, um, the system that provides dispatch.
Okay, okay.
And all that, so.
Thank you.
Um, recycling services, which we, we contract with Waste Pro USA to provide the recycling collection for the town. So we, that, that's going to cover that.
Is that an increase or the, just the fee?
That's the fee.
Okay, thank you.
Same amount, um, that we contract with them through your contract.
Thank you.
Um, and then we've added some, some, um, camera systems for the police department, uh, for traffic monitoring. Um, code enforcement abatement, ten thousand dollars. Um, machinery and equipment totaling four hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. Um, we did, um, purchase twelve vehicles, or were planning to purchase twelve vehicles for eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars. Uh, vehicles that were, um, mandatory and were, well past their lifecycle. We completely. Um, and another outlaying amount of six hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars. Um, we did work in some contingency for emergencies, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-two. And the, um, recommended general fund budget. Um, moving to the gross revenue fund, uh, this is, uh, phrase, the water sewer, wastewater collection, wastewater treatment departments. Um, total projected revenues is thirty-three million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-two, which is again a decrease of one million, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars from fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. Um, we are projecting, uh, impact in the water and sewer sales, uh, based on, uh, the economy. I am. Wanted to again take a conservative approach there. Um, we do have bond proceeds in portion, the amount of twenty-one million, five hundred and ninety-nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, the recommended fee changes, uh, follows in line with keeping up with our rate analysis, rate analysis projections, uh, of seven point five percent increase in water sewer rates.
I think that, since we're doing this for the public, that deserves a, um, layman's term explanation, please.
Yes, as we, um, as we project how we increase the water and sewer capacity in the town of Fort Mill, um, costs associated with that from our water supplier, um, City of Rock Hill, um, they build into, um, their projections of what we would need to pay them in order for them to continue providing us the water, the amount, uh, the, the amount of water that we need for our waters, our water providers. And Shontae would like to chime in a little more on that.
Yes, um, thank you. Um, in addition to what Mr. Brown had said, the revenue bonds that we have, the debt that we've had to go into to keep up with demand, requires that we keep rates consistent to, so that we can make our payments to them. Sort of like mortgage payments for your homes?
Sure.
Well, or buying a, a car. We have to have funds available to make our mo- our, uh, uh, debt service payments for the various bonds that we have outstanding at this point. And some of the language in the, uh, ordinance states that we must maintain one point two percent over what our, uh, standard payment is. And so with that, taking that into account when the rate study was done, this is the result of what the rate study has said we would need to do from year to year to not, to stay in compliance.
Okay, so it's similar to what we did last year. The same increase. Okay, I just think it's, we're doing this for people that aren't sitting in this room.
I agree. How long is that study, uh, then, red study?
Um, we can have it updated, you know, we, we don't have it updated routinely, but most particularly when we do go out to issue debt, we do have it updated. The last time it was updated was, uh, last, last year. Year before that's when we borrowed the eleven million dollars.
For the plant, right?
Yeah.
For the water treatment, yeah.
And then we had to have a, uh, somewhat of a review of it done when we borrowed the forty thousand million dollars, the consequence to that.
Right.
So we do retain a company that helps us with that, who has our history and will update it for us. We just don't do it, say, every year.
Right.
Or we do it as we need to.
Thank you. That was important information. Thank you very much. Sorry, Dagan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shontae. Um, expenditure highlights include, um, total projected expenditures of thirty-three million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two, which is in balance with projected revenues. Um, included in the budget is, again, um, for the personnel, there was no recommended salary adjustments, um, as same as we did for the general. Um, it does include for twenty, 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 twenty budget, uh, equipment in the amount of three hundred and two thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, vehicles, um, twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Water meters, four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Bus station rehabilitation, six hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Wastewater treatment plant upgrade phase two, um, which is twenty million, six hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and three dollars. And we've built in a contingency in the amount of thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. Includes our grocery revenue fund. Uh, we'll move into the stormwater utility fund. Um, revenue, uh, highlights include our total projected revenues of nine hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which is the decrease of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and one dollars from fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. Um, we expect to receive from fees nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, and then five thousand, but just shine six thousand dollars for other fees associated with storm. Um, again, total projected expenditures, um, of nine hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which is in balance with the projected revenues. Um, again, for the stormwater department, uh, we are, staff is not recommending salary adjustments, um, for town staff in that department as, as well as the other departments. Uh, there were few expenditures in this department, uh, expenditures in this department. Uh, one, one utility truck, um, ten thousand dollars set aside for sidewalk and asphalt repair. And we would build in a contingency of twelve thousand dollars. Um, we're now on the, move to the capital projects fund. Uh, the total projected revenues of this fund is fifteen million, eight hundred and six thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which is an increase of one million, six hundred, one thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars over the two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty fiscal year. Um, that includes, uh, projected lawn sale sales, ten thousand dollars. Um, interest income of three thousand dollars, fund balance appropriation of six million, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Special revenue fund transfers of six million dollars, um, bond proceeds of three million dollars. Um, expenditures, um, for this, this fund, um, total projected expenditures, fifteen million, eight hundred and six thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which is in balance with projected revenues. Um, included with that is a bond debt service payment of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Included with that is a bond debt service payment of $331,129. There, we did build in $200,000 for capital projects master plan. Nine, nine million, nine hundred thousand dollars for Frank's athletic park. Two million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars built in for the Walter, Walter Elijah Park improvements, which includes the amphitheater and additional restrooms and parking. C-MAC projection for local matches of $125,000. Recreation facilities improvements of $2,500,000. We'll be speaking on one of those items a little bit later in the meeting. And then we keep $100,000 in there for miscellaneous sidewalk project that may arise. Special revenue funds, these are listed that we receive each year, accommodations tax, fire protection, impact fees, municipal services, services impact fee, recreational impact fees, recreation impact fees, and hospitality tax. And I provided the amounts, the projected revenues for those funds.
Debt tax and APACs are those projections trended off of where we are, in present?
They are conservative.
Yeah, I figure they were.
Thank you. And so Mayor, from those revenue funds, that concludes the overview of the recommended budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Again, that is, I use the term better, but we just needed to make sure that we were, continue providing the services that our citizens and customers expect. And we're just taking the conservative approach and will re, take a, take a look back after six months, first two quarters, see if projections were off by staff and, you know, we can move forward from there.
Uh, Davey?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, on the Walter Elijah Park amphitheater?
Yes, sir.
That price include the problem that you run into?
Uh, that is, that's the projection at this point. We are still working through that and as you move through the pro, through the project, there will be opportunities for us to save funding, save monies in other areas. So we're gonna, at this point, we're sticking with that number. Any changes, I will make counsel aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know what our rough estimate was for the end of this previous cycle for overage under savings? I know we made significant cutbacks towards the end of the year because of COVID and knowing, yeah, revenues may not be what we anticipated, so you cut off a lot of spending. I, I know we haven't been audited yet, but do we have an estimate how financially?
I can say that we will, we will not be in a deficit.
Go ahead.
We, but yes, we still have some, what we're seeing to fill out to finish up for the end of this, this month.
Okay.
So we, getting you a number for that would be difficult right now.
And when do you anticipate?
We're work, we're working with them as they can get to us because of how they're having to work and because of other clients that they have on different fiscal years. So we just, we just keep connecting.
That's what the auditor you're talking?
Yeah.
Yep. For the fiscal year, once September 30th hits, we probably need a couple of weeks.
Oh, you mean for this fiscal year?
Yeah.
Couple of weeks to determine, let the last couple of invoices.
It'd take a month.
Yeah, because.
Where I work.
It's the time time with things coming in, but I don't, again, I don't anticipate of having a deficit at that time. This is because of the approach that we took after COVID struck in terms of trying to make sure that everything that people were buying what they absolutely need and had to have. And so they've been very, very delicate.
I think it's.
It's comfortable, but we can have a much better number for you for the second meeting in October.
Okay.
I think that would provide us enough time to get this in.
Yeah, even if it's just a rough estimate, I mean, yeah, did we have $5 left or $500,000? You know, I mean.
At, at this point.
I like the second number, but, and I like that's not a deficit, so.
That's why I said it that way because I don't know, I don't have a.
It's always hard if you don't know.
At this point.
Right.
But I think it's important to state what we do know. Up to this point in time, we have exercised an extremely conservative practice with our expenditures of the town of Fort Mill and we're enviable by most on the fact that we don't overspend. We have been very careful with the monies and the budgeting and how we move forward. We have, through the process of being audited, gotten some of the highest criteria that we could have ever gotten. And, and I do believe that as we moved into a crisis situation, none of us anticipated or expected or truthfully know how to navigate. I'm very pleased that we're doing it, coming away from a, a very good position of knowing we did not want to be overstretched or in debt. I, I think that there are probably other communities and other homes that are in a different position because they were maybe overly optimistic. So I'm grateful for the hard work that was done before this dastardly pandemic that put us in a position to weather this perhaps a little better. So thank you for the hard work to do that and the sacrifices made by our staff.
I wish I could give you a number, but I.
All right. Does that complete your?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for allowing me.
No, 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 it's, it's all good. It's all good, just wasn't on the part of the agenda I read, so, sorry.
So our second reading of budget will be at the 28th meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, so any questions we have from the presentation that was given to us tonight? We can ask.
Absolutely.
Sooner rather than later.
Between now and then?
Yeah, sooner rather than later. I, I don't think it's fair to ask questions up against the date that we're getting ready to vote, yeah.
As well as proceeding with information that's.
True, true. All right, new business item number four, consideration of resurfacing tennis courts at the Fort Mill YMCA complex. Davey is our expert, do we have a motion to accept this item?
Make a motion to accept number four.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, Davey?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, this is a topic that has come up a couple of times over the last three quarters or so. The tennis courts that are located out at the YMCA at the complex are town-owned tennis courts and the, the condition of the courts themselves, it's been several years since they've been addressed. I had in the packet that was provided, the photos just last week of some of the cracking in every, there were six courts at the location and all six courts are affected by the cracks, some larger than others, but they all are affected. The last maintenance that was performed was the building of those cracks and that was a few years ago, which was a temporary solution at the time and that has now failed and with the compromise, with the base now being compromised, companies are not willing to come out and, and do work filling those cracks again and then being held liable with that. So based on that, staff has looked at options of resurfacing the courts, the others, all six in their current location. And then we, as counsel requested that we go back and look at maybe resurfacing four of the courts in their current location and adding four new courts, which would, that to put them in a row based on a rendering provided to us months ago by ESPN Associates. Staff brought back the cost on that restructuring. And so tonight, you know, we're just, staff's looking for some guidance as to the direction that council would like to move tennis courts. We were in hopes of, running out of, of warm weather season, so we were in hopes of maybe getting in the repairs before the cold weather sets in. If we miss that timeframe, then we would be looking at a springtime resurfacing project. The tennis courts, I would like to provide program numbers for the tennis courts, because there have been some questions in the past. In 2019, we had our tennis lessons a week, provided 294 participants, while there were 121 participants in tennis camps. I will say our, in 2020, we got a late start due to COVID, but we began in July of 2020 providing or offering lessons again on the tennis courts and camps. The lessons themselves have, we've had 187 participants. And I think the numbers, the numbers were strong, in my opinion, based on, I think kids are looking for something to do and wanting to get out in the, in the fresh air after being beat up for a few months there. So the lessons were up 187 and the camps were 115, but that basically, the camps are only for July and August, a portion of August, because once schools began, we no longer offer camps. So it wasn't a full, um, so. Those were pretty good numbers based on the course. And, you know, we have, courts are open to the public and be used by the public. And, and I do not have numbers on that. The, the two projects are, the two projects that we closed for, again, one was to resurface six and a half courts in their current locations at 260, well, it's going to be a little bit of an increase because last November was when they provided, so it'd be $223,379, about $3,000, so we'll look at $3,000 increase. Or option two, which is resurfacing a full course and building four new courts at the cost of $384,032. There's been some discussion about facility itself and maybe some, adding some upgrades to it along with the resurfacing of the courts. A restroom facility has been discussed, shading, renovating some of the, the facilities located there now. So those are the two options and again, staff has, has brought it to council for some guidance.
I'd like to make a comment about this. I'm certainly the one that has pursued this for some time. I have zero problem putting money into recreation opportunities for our community. Tennis is one of the few that can be enjoyed from a very early age, three, four years old, not competitive play, but you can go out there and get a lesson and, and learn what to do, all the way through people even older than me. It is one of the few aspects of our recreation program that is available to adults and to seniors that is enjoyed. We can't enjoy the courts as they stand now. The, the cracks are hazardous, you know, it, it's just in disrepair. It needs a restroom facility instead of having to walk all the way around and gain access through YMCA to a restroom. Most communities have tennis courts, most of them. I think this has fallen on the lower side of a priority listing because a lot of our larger neighborhoods have added very nice tennis facilities, very nice. But I would like to see us pursue it from the standpoint of not all of us live in those neighborhoods, not all of us have access to those courts. There are many people from Fort Mill that are after Rock Hill and participate in the Rock Hill facility because it is available and they can get conference play, league play among people of their similar ability and age. So that's one of the things, if you think about it from the standpoint of adult activities other than the walking trails and church softball, you really don't have it unless you, I don't think there's any, maybe there's some swimming for aerobic activity out at the Y, but as far as town provided, it's one of the few activities that can cover generationally our constituents. So that's, that's one of the things that I put forth for consideration.
I'm, I'm afraid my tennis knowledge is very, very limited. Eight courts as opposed to six courts, can you run a tournament?
On eight?
Six courts?
Not really.
You need eight courts to run a tournament?
Yes, tournaments consist of three sets of doubles and two sets of singles. Not everybody in my age group wants to play singles, I love it, but, you know, other people, the running, it, it's a little bit easier on the body to do doubles, you don't have to stretch as much. So that's league play. Currently, with the lessons and the camps and the recreational side of things, you know, for people like myself, we just need it to be safe and to have a place that we feel proud of and that has a restroom available, that'd be nice.
I call some of those cracks as being general, I think I could slip with a 68 Cadillac in a couple of those cracks.
We've been very fortunate. We've been very fortunate. And if you ever want to go and just watch, you can go and sit out there on one of the little benches, these kids are fabulous, they're incredible, the middle school, high school kids, it's amazing. And it's a lot of fun to see the little kids, you know, but, I don't know, I watched the open last night, you know, it's a great sport that isn't that hard on you and the equipment, if you buy, you can go to a Walmart and get a racket and everybody's got a pair of tennis shoes. So it's not as if it's, you know, you don't have to go buy golf clubs or something like that. But my only consideration is that we don't have anything that's in that level of disrepair that the town puts its name on. That's, that's an embarrassment to me, I, I don't like it. So, you know, if there are other things, I'm not making this a pet project, it's just, it is something I do, so I know a little bit more about it than I do pickleball or soccer because I, I can't run around and play soccer, you know, I'll probably die. But, just saying, I'd probably just collapse.
Well, I really liked the number, I mean, we had 195 kids and we still brought back 180 considering what's happening in the world today. I mean, I love those numbers and just off the top of my head, if we could put eight courts there and, well, that'd be another 60 kids, so we'll say, if we get half that, we can hold another 30 in there. I mean, that would be phenomenal if we're being limited on space, the number of contestants or people or.
And those camps are tough. I'll tell you, I see those kids out there in the heat, they run exercises, they're taught strokes, they play against each other. It, it's a, it's a good activity for forming the same things you would want your kids to learn about discipline, about athleticism, about being a good teammate. You know, I'm very pleased to see those numbers as well. I, I think that's not such a bad thing, given that they're not exactly a highlight.
Yeah, they only have a decrease of a third basically on lesson, given COVID situation is, speaks highly of all sports honestly, of how much kids and parents need, need to be outside and need to organize activities. One of the suggestions, well, a couple of questions I've got about the proposal, would we consider, given the COVID's going on, given that we're in a budget somewhat crisis right now, not knowing where revenues are going to be in expenditure? I don't disagree, I understand that there is disrepair and that we need to have some repairs done. But what about just repairing the four existing courts, shutting down the other two in a half until a time that we look in the spring to be able to build potentially new four and numbers will go up? Again, we're going into winter months, it should slow down, we don't have camps going on, so we don't have those conflicts. Do we have any estimate on that? And then my second question is, what's the time for getting this work done? I'm trying to look through everything and I just saw I had to chair for 30 days, but I don't know what the pre-craft work is. Do we know that either one of us?
That's a very good question, Ms. Cook. And I wouldn't have an exact date, I know that we put this project out for the. I know that we put this project out, will be the, the original project, just to resurface the courts in their current location. And, uh, last October, we had a bid opening in November. Did not award the bid, but, um, took those bids. And at that moment in November, um, it would, the company that had the lowest bid would not start that project until a March, April timeframe. They had already missed the window. So I can only assume that the window would be up until early November. So if we're, if we're gonna, if we start on that project, they may tell me if we award it tomorrow, that they may, they might not have the time to start the project and complete it before the cold season sets in. So, uh, this may be a spring project anyway. I don't have a, a good update on when they could start.
But I will say, it's a lot like building a pool. You want to build a pool and enjoy it next summer, you need to be thinking now and securing that slot so that they can do it when the weather permits or you won't get in line. You know, and there aren't that many contractors out there that do tennis courts.
It's like the sod on the baseball field.
Exactly.
Doing it six months before you intend to build the, uh, use the field is not itself.
We, this is a vote to award this bid, is that what we're?
It's, this is an opportunity to, yes, to, um, award the bid. I will say, I left out of my, my, my original presentation, um, the funding, like I, uh, spoke of in the budget presentation, um, there was 2.5 million dollars that was accounted for in the capital projects fund. So funding for this resurfacing project is in the capital projects fund. It's an amount of $500,000 that was set aside just in this budget for the project. So it's a, it's enough to cover either option. It just, one option is more expensive than the other and you just, that's the cost for resurfacing the courts only, uh, in their current location. And then the, if you, when they build the four new courts, the four new courts come with fencing and.
Lights.
Lights and all that, but, but the other four courts would not. So if we want to do any upgrades, painting of the fencing, updating the lighting, that would come out of this, this, uh, autumn money, a thousand dollars.
And we did not include anything for, if we did all eight, getting rid of the two and a half that are currently, that would not be used. Well, one of them, half the house gets absorbed as part of the back door.
Yes.
But the other two that are bumped down on there, do we have a budget for demolition or removing those?
We do not, so it's, uh, could probably do that in-house. Uh, would be, it would be, and it would not be a very expensive venture for that. Remove those, dig them up basically, remove fencing and, uh, recreate it and sew it back with brass. And that would, that would take the spot and that way would take away the safety liability for those two courts.
So I think the intent for the vote tonight is to get a council decision to move forward or not.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, things can change. I know, Lisa, you had, uh, found opportunity for a grant somewhere for tennis. And I feel certain we would want to find those, you know, if at all possible, so that could offset it. But those are maybes, you know, those are not things we, we can't guarantee.
Like the library, you never know unless you play.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, have we have tried or found any grants since, I mean, this was originally dated June? Where in September have we applied or reached out? National Tennis Association has some on their website.
We have not.
Anybody have any additional comments or questions? The motion on the table is to approve that we move forward with the resurfacing in one form or another.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have a second. No further questions, call the vote.
Okay, wait a minute, the, the motion isn't specific. It's just saying to move forward with which decision, with eight courts or six courts or?
I think that the motion should include which option.
Well, it has option one is resurfacing 6.5. There's nothing about any, and option two is resurfacing four, well, excuse me, resurfacing four and building four.
Yes.
That's what the option, you're saying the, the motion should reflect which option.
She wants specificity in the motion, so we're selecting the course of action to take, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is that right?
Uh, I mean, I, I can't vote on something that doesn't. I, I mean, to give staff direction.
The motion on the table is simply to approve, so we're going to need to.
More specific.
We're going to have to be more specific.
So with, and, and, you know, I, I have never played tennis. It was, uh, when you look up on court day, you see my name beside it. So, uh, but the timeframe, and, and I'm just running through this again a little bit, is, um, sorry. Um, do we think that the, obviously I would assume resurfacing the six and a half would be quicker than the resurfacing of four and building four? I mean, do they really give us, I, I'm just thinking out loud.
No, that's what I was asking before, what the actual timeline is for these projects, the difference.
Yeah, they, they seem, they told us, uh, it would be within 90 days once the construction starts. But it could be as early as 60 days, depending on weather.
To re, just to resurface everything?
Right now.
The six and a half?
It's a lot quicker, you know, if they can get them in, they may be able to meet those dates. But if you, when you're constructing four new courts, that's going to end the timeframe.
And weather plays a huge role. I, I've worked some scheduling for construction. You can't pour concrete or type of porous material that way and expect it to set up properly and last the way it should if the weather, if the temperatures aren't right. It's not just rain, it's temperatures as well.
And so Mr. Moody, I may not have answered your question, but if, uh, we have a chance, a, a small chance of, um, having the project completed in this year, if it's, if it completed in their current affection. We do not have enough, we don't have a chance of having new courts installed before.
Right, yes, of course, right.
But it would be a spring, we know that would be a spring project. And, and actually, and I, the six and a half courts could be a spring project. We have not, till we have, till we can go back to, um, company, the contractor and say, yes, we are ready to move forward. Because we don't know where we would fall in, in line, if they have any openings right now. So, um, there could possibly be a spring project for either of the two options.
So I think basically the options we have to select from tonight are refinish the six and a half where they sit, refinish the six and add two, or refinish four and add four and demolish the top two, is that correct?
That is correct.
Everybody get that option A, refinish the six and a half as they sit. Option B, refinish the six, add two. Option C, refinish four, demolish two and add four.
Two in the worst condition beyond repair at this point, they're, they're all.
They're all beyond repair.
They're all beyond, they're, I mean, resurfacing. The, the, because of the cracks over the years, um.
And the water.
They're basically going to build new courts when they resurface it.
Well, they don't want the liability of patching over and it not lasting.
Yeah, yeah.
And I will tell you, I'm struggling not as much for the project as I am the time that has elapsed since we received the information, that it's not current information and it's not thorough, given the COVID and all that's happened. I have to, uh, understand needing it by springtime when, you know, things are going to happen. But by the same token, we're just getting on somebody's calendar in spring. Making a decision today doesn't have them digging dirt in two weeks, to your point. Uh, we'd probably miss that winter, I mean, the current cycle for this year.
There is a lot. Well, you never know though, with the COVID, they might have had somebody pull from their schedule.
And, and that's what, what I'm.
Swing in directions.
I'm just struggling to vote for approval on this presentation, knowing it's several months old and it's construction now. A lot has changed with COVID.
So what are you suggesting?
My preference would be.
Till next year?
I'd like to make a motion that we defer to the next meeting, the 28th, I think is what it was, to where you could go back to the contractor and have updated numbers, information, timeframe, given that it's the end of September.
Numbers, based on?
You said yourself, you felt like the numbers probably have adjusted slightly?
No, the number I provided you was the adjusted number. We did get the adjusted number of 263,379, which is $3,000 more, we'll look at $3,000 more than what they have provided last November.
Okay, but then the presentation we have is 260, so you're now saying it's 263, four?
That's the, that's, that's the increase that they provided us, um, as of today.
Okay.
For the six and a half resurfacing?
For the six and a half. And, and the 384,000 is the one from June, they're still holding to that number.
No change, no variance in that number.
And once we go under contract, that number doesn't change unless they run into some problem.
Right, the slot then.
And when you said you felt like we could handle it in-house with minimal costs, are you willing to put any kind of figure towards that for total project? For the demolition work?
And you can, I would say it would be, uh, much less than, I'll say, I would say $10,000 if you get a good number for that.
And that's probably just ma, majority labor, equipment rental if you need to.
Is a motion in order?
Um, it would be nice, do you choose, if you're going to make a motion, it has to be op, option A, B or C? Yes.
I'd like, I, I'll move that we approve option A.
So option A is to resurface the six and a half courts as they sit. Mr. Huntley has made a motion to that effect, do I have a second?
Clarify motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that with the contractor doing the work or with staff doing the work?
I think the staff part was demolition.
Demo.
Demo, okay.
But this would be all contractor?
So Mr. Huntley's made a motion, do I have a second? Do I have another motion?
I make a motion, we do C.
I believe C was resurface four and add four.
Demo two.
And demo two. Do I have a second for? Vote. All right, we have a motion and a second for refurbish four, demolish two and add four.
Do we need to vote on Mr. Huntley's motion, do we vote on that?
We had to, well, he didn't get a second.
Okay, okay, all right, that doesn't happen much, I just want.
No, it doesn't, doesn't. Yes, you did. I think his intent was served.
And we're, and we're doing all the demo, really have a move to, and we're doing all the down road.
For basically $400,000.
I, I would say that would be point, point line.
So the motion on the table, option C, re, refurbish four, tear out two and a half and add four. And it has a second. Miss Hensaw, how do you vote?
Favor.
Ms. Cook, how do you vote?
Again.
Okay, I'm going to vote in favor. Mr. Huntley?
In favor.
Mr. Helms?
My motion in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Moody? And Mr. Shirey?
And we're, and we're looking at following this, what we, I'm sorry, I just found this document from ESP, that's what we're following?
Yes, sir.
Okay, in favor.
Thank you. All right, so it's six, one in favor of option C.
My request would also be of staff that we continue to pursue a master plan for our parks and recreation needs and assessments for our facilities. Um, and another concern I have is that these courts are in such disarray at this point that we're concerned about safety. Do we need to shut them down until construction can begin?
We can certainly, um, reach out to the, um, contractor we have that's providing the tennis, uh, lessons to make sure they're fine, that we can shut down, I think we probably shut down two of them, they're not using veteran, the worst ones. Those are the ones at the top that we're, that would be demolished anyway.
They get used by running groups that gather there and talk about, I mean, they're, they're used for more than tennis. And thank heavens they're not used for bicycles and things that'll tear them up. So we will signage when we have something new, we've never had that before. But I would want signage to protect the investment.
Can I clarify a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we were kept discussing that those are open to the public, they are not controlled by YMCA?
No, sir.
Okay.
And you do not pay a fee to use them?
Okay.
So unlike our soccer program where you pay in to participate and be a part of it, this you don't, uh, then the lessons and the camps and that's revenue for the town?
That's correct.
Yeah, and you don't pay to walk around Walter Elijah and you don't pay to walk on the nature trail. And it's really hard to put numbers on kids and say, you're going to go out here and play every Saturday morning. It's not the same thing. And I warrant, and I, 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 I'm not done. I warrant that if we calculated the amount of money we've spent on soccer and T-ball and other things, it far exceeds anything we've spent on tennis or walking trails. So I've hit a hot button here. You know, I, I am absolutely gracious to spend money for the kids of this town as often as we can. But when it comes to adults, I think we also, I'm an adult and I pay fees, I pay taxes. And I think we deserve to have something too, I do.
Nothing much.
But by the same token, our Parks and Rec program rents fields from other places. We're not renting fields. And, and I'm going, I'm just saying, it's, we don't have a master plan. It's the biggest heartburn for this. So I did not know until we started the tennis discussion that people didn't pay to do this, that it was open from anybody.
We used to, we used to when we.
I thought it was like Rock Hills where you were a member of the tennis club. I didn't understand, again, of all those on council, you know, I'm in the Parks and Rec, I understand it. I understand the need of all ages, absolutely.
But I think that master plan has been discussed for the last four and a half years.
Just like City.
And we can't seem to come to agreement within our own council to head forward to a finished product. So I think once we grapple with that, maybe we'll get more.
Well, but, okay, I know.
Um, new business item number five, consideration of allocations for Town of Fort Mill Accommodation Grant Funds. Davy, do I have a motion?
First, their presentation, from doing their presentation.
Nope, it's business item number five.
I'll move, will you?
Thank you, Ronnie. Mr. Helms has made a motion to approve, Miss Hensaw has seconded. Okay, Davy?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I'm ready. Um, each year, the state requires any municipality that collects, um, 50,000, over $50,000 in accommodations taxes um, to, uh, head up and, um, offer accommodation tax grants to, um, non-profit organizations that qualify under their recommend, their, their requirement, drawing tourism to our municipality.
From outside range.
Outside, so that's anyone and is considered, anyone outside of 50 mile radius is considered a tourist. Um, and that is from, from the state. And so for the, um, 2021 year, um, they, we had three applicants apply for these funds. Uh, the Accommodations Tax Committee, which is made up of, um, accommodations representatives in the accommodations field, representatives in, uh, hospitality field, um, and then one in, um, like historical and, and that type of field. So we, the committee met back on the 24th of August and reviewed the applications. I provided those three applicants to you. Uh, they were Fort Mill History Museum, Town of Fort Mill for the South Carolina Strawberry Festival, and Narrowway Productions. Each application that was provided, um, put in their, uh, request for, um, funding. And there's two types of funding that's offered in our municipality for this. It is for marketing expenses and maintenance. State specifies a limited number of things that qualify for this application, this grant. Um, up until last year, York County was not deemed a high tourist, um, um, county. So some of the things that they allow in their funding, we did not qualify for, none of our, um, uh, five oh one three Cs, I qualified for. We are now, uh, listed as a high tourism county. So for that, it brought in some of these opportunities like, um, maintenance and facilities. So, um, the, the committee studied the applications and based on what was requested through the Fort Mill History Museum, um, they had, uh, requested thirty-two thousand dollars on marketing expenses. They had, they provided their overall marketing expenses, what they provided, they just requested thirty-two thousand, they just provided their overall expenses. And then the cost for a dehumidifier for the museum, uh, along with the, uh, HVAC, which is air conditioning, heating and air conditioning unit, that total cost is twenty-one thousand dollars. So they, um, what they totally requested was fifty-three thousand, but based on tourism and allowing what, what they would actually, the amount of, um, a percentage of their programs that would be dedicated to just providing tourism to Town of Fort Mill. They provided paperwork that is forty percent of their, um, participants come from outside that fifty mile radius. And at the end of the year, they have to provide those numbers to the state, but, so they provided forty percent. So what the committee took was, based on state regulations, they did not, um, recommend awarding more than forty percent of what they requested funding. So what that means is for the applicant, what they had requested, they, they can get up to forty percent and then they have to find the difference in funding on their own outside of the accommodations tax. So if they do not spend the accommodations tax money within that year, then they must return that back to the town. And that money goes back into a fund, uh, that the town holds on to, and it is a, a continuation fund, um, that for every three years, the third year rolls off, and we have to return that money back to the state if it's not used. Or Town of Fort Mill has to, um, go through the same application process with the state accommodations for to, uh, hold on to those funds and use in any projects we have. Last year, if you recall, uh, there was fifty-six thousand dollars that was not spent and was rolling off, so the town applied for that, um, for that funding to go to our Banks Athletic Park. Uh, to date, we have not heard back from.
To date, we have not gotten a decision, I think COVID got in the way, they wanted to do a special meeting.
So, we're still waiting to hear back from them for that money.
So, we still have another applicants, is that what they're paying the fifty-six grand less than?
That's basically, and right now, that's what's happening, Town of Fort Mill, we have very few applicants.
Right.
Grant fund, that's.
But the criteria drives that we don't, I mean, a lot of people would apply, but they can't meet the criteria of heads and beds.
That's right.
That's the local way of saying, how do you get this money, you put heads and beds?
That's correct.
When you go to a hotel, when you pay your room fee, you pay accommodations tax.
Correct.
Correct.
And that, we took and having hit that, it's code, grant, but that won't affect.
Right. So what we have, the funds we had worked from this year are for the past three years. And so that was the money that, that was the part of money that was there that the applicants were applying for. So, um, for the History Museum, again, they did request, I spoke incorrectly a while ago, they did request fifty-three thousand, but they were, forty percent of that, um, was for, was twelve thousand dollars, eight, twelve thousand eight hundred dollars marketing expenses and eight thousand four hundred dollars toward the dehumidifier, uh, and heating and air conditioning. Uh, again, they, if we approve the recommendations from the Accommodations Tax Committee, then those funds will be generated to these applicants, but they would have to find the funding for the difference in the amount, sixty percent of the project. Um, the second applicant was the Town of Fort Mill, uh, for the South Carolina Strawberry Festival. Uh, the amount, really all we qualify for, for that, um, the festival qualifies for is marketing and media. So, uh, twelve thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars is what we typically spend, what we have recently spent in that fund. Um, so we requested that amount and it would only, um, we can only turn about fifty percent of our applicants come from out of that fifty mile radius. And, um, based on COVID cancelling the twenty-twenty, uh, Strawberry Festival, those numbers could have been a little higher, but there's no way for us to know, so we were concerned in what we put in, requested was fifty percent. So, um, the Accommodations Tax Committee, um, used the same, uh, the same regu- uh, requirement that they were based on the first applicant and provided us fifty percent of our request. Um, the third applicant was Narrowway Productions, they're brand new, they have, they're not brand new, but they're due to this, uh, grant process. Um, they are located outside of Town of Lemons, but that does not stop them from being able to apply for this grant if they can prove that they were, they're putting heads in beds as mayor's.
In the town.
In the town. And so, uh, it just so happens, we had a couple of, it didn't so happen, but our, two of our, um, committee members are in the accommodations field and they were, they, it said that it's, they get narrowway participants all the time that are staying in their hotels, so they're very comfortable with, um, providing funding to Narrowway. Uh, I will say Narrowway because through this grant fund process, they are now, and if they haven't already, they will very shortly be promoting the hotels in the Town of Fort Mill for their, come stay and, and watch their production. So, um, our hotels will get a little bit of boost from that probably.
I would almost like to see that as a requirement, honestly, if they're gonna be getting funds from the town, you know, some type of a commitment from them, that they're gonna encourage people to stay in the town, especially with them being so close to the state line, um, it just seems odd.
Yeah, and they, and they have a problem with that, or, um, they, they, that's what they relate, they'd be glad, they wanna do that. Uh, they just had not done that in the past, I think, because they had hotels that were already in county, that were in the, uh, Carolinas Boulevard or, or, that they had been working with for years, but they, uh, they will include the ones inside Town of Lemons, so.
I can't remember what meeting I was in, but it's astronomical how many people they draw to the area. Their attendance is unbelievable.
See, see, buses are a problem.
I, I'm gonna say it's like, I might be wrong, but I wanna say it's like South Carolina from a York County perspective.
Really?
It's unbelievable how many people.
Well, that is a first question.
They're requesting thirty now.
Right.
Yes, and then, yeah, they're just requesting marketing and advertising expenses, um, they just requested thirty, and the committee, they, they could only, committee only voted on fifty percent because there's still a question about how many, um, participants that go to Narrowway, stay inside of Town of Lemons. So they were conservative on that, on that front, so.
But they're cutting down the amount of participants too, inside the building.
That's right, and they, they knew that given with COVID nineteen, that moving forward, you're gonna have to meet those guidelines, so it should be less participant, participation. So based on that, the committee, um, the committee recommends to award them fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so those are the three applications, um, again, town staff, myself and, um, Portia, our town clerk, sat in and, and with this meeting and the minister's meeting, um, everything was followed by state regulations. And this is what the committee recommended, um, to town council and staff is bringing to you for your, for your vote.
Any further questions? Comments? The, excuse me, sorry. It is to approve the allocations as were recommended by the Accommodations Committee. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We have a motion on the table to approve the recommendations made by the Accommodations Committee, as was just outlined by Davy. Um, Trudy, how do you vote? Okay. We had a second, uh-huh. Um, we had Hensaw and Helms made the motion and the second. I think you made the motion, and Trudy, you made the second. Trudy just voted yes, Lisa?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Mr. Huntley?
Yes.
Hey, Helms, alright, Moody?
Yes.
And Mr. Shary?
Yes.
Alright, it is.
Is there, I'm sorry, can I just ask what, when you said that York County has now been designated as a recreational area? Are there different, are high tourism, is there like tiers of tourism? I mean, is there more money out there that we can get, say, we get the threat trail through, or we do something to bring in even more people to raise our profile in the recreational world?
I do not have an answer for you for that, this is just totally on the accommodations tax. Um, just the, the accommodations tax committee of the state deemed York County a high tourist location. And I believe that City of Rock Hill had, has a good bit to do with that. Um, but because we're deemed that, it helped, it opened up some of the avenues for these applicants to receive more money.
And I think the, um, tourism that's ongoing in Rock Hill has driven the change in that characterization. They certainly have added a tremendous amount from the facility downtown, the BMX, the Panthers coming. It's certainly, um, lifted all boats in the York County area that they've added, they've invested so heavily in their tourism.
I'm like Jamie though, I'd be curious to see what other perks we get from that new escalated classification.
Maybe, ma'am, I mean, you said, I mean, we open up the scrap property and allow boat launching out of there, and we have a big flotilla once a year, or whatever.
Even our current facility, you know.
I mean, that's, I'm just saying, if we start upping our game, I mean, that that allows the even more, to raise, even if it's the same amount of mo- or the same criteria, but the more money to be allocated out.
So Davy, can you reach out to the state to find out what that increased level of?
I think there's a little confusion here, that accommodations tax, I think, I'm, I'm thinking what I'm hearing, Shary's, um, we're looking for more planning, but this, this accommodation tax is strictly for tourist-related, uh, grants. It has nothing to do with the Town of Fort Mill and getting, you can't be designated higher than a high tourist.
It's an allocation.
Right, well, you said that they were, well, now that they can add in building maintenance.
Right, what is?
You know, what are the other things that could be added in if we get even more tourism?
Yes.
I guess that's what my question.
Alright, and I apologize, what, so their criteria is specific, it's only.
What could we target in the future?
Right.
I can imagine any businesses in Fort Mill that meet this classification, if we reached out and said, hey, here's a tax money you could apply for now that we're a high, high rent district, you know, high tourism district.
Oh, we have lots of that.
We could, or we could only have one more, but that one more makes a big difference, you know, to some.
I agree with the one more, and I'll, I'll comment to that based on our mask communication that came out this past week. But I think the criteria is very tight on who can apply and meet the criteria. It's not just any business, you've got to have a specific, you're in a, in a chimney, if you will, to be able to even get to us to allocate, and the allocations aren't set by us. We can allocate what we wanna give, but, but a big amount, we don't get.
So do we know how Narrowway found out about this?
We actually reached out to them because we want to make, this is, uh, was this year four, year three, four? Four, year four, so we are struggling, I don't wanna use the term struggling, but we, we advertise, we're required to advertise for this grant. We just don't get very many applicants.
There's so few that fit the bill for, for us on this side of the river.
So, we, we, I, I think it's, uh, the thought process is the money's there, it's collected, we really would like to spend it in our community and, and benefit our community rather than going back to the state.
Agreed.
Um, and so we're trying to look for applicants out there that come in and, and apply for these grants. And Narrowway just made sense because we're, it was a feeling by staff that they would definitely draw, uh, heads to beds. And they're the closest applicants, but, uh, for whatever reason, City of Rock Hill, they get inundated with applications yearly basis, and we're trying to get, to grow our applicant base and, uh, hopefully this is one opportunity for us to, to move the right rate.
Glad to hear you say that staff reached out to them, because I love the proactive approach, um, especially given that you're saying in the same breath, we can advertise, well, how do you advertise and reach out to people? Nobody trusts or reads the newspapers, you know, what's in there, how do you find it out, even in digital? It, it, it just gets lost, there's so much information, you don't get any good information. So I'm glad to see we're being proactive, and I think that's kinda what Jamie and I were trying to say is, how else can we be proactive to get more people or get more out of this opportunity? So, great.
And the point I wanted to make was in our, does everybody get the mask magazine that comes out, the Municipal Association? In that, there's a, it's a very large one this time, and when you look towards the back, you'll see all the communities that applied for grants and funding that were awarded. And I, I don't want us in the position I've seen where we're out to try to win a little trophy. I don't care anything about that, but if there's something out there where we can get funding to move us along, I at least want us on the list of people to be considered. That's the only way we're gonna get better at it, and you can't, it's like to Lisa's point, you can't win if you don't play. So, there's quite a few, uh, things I didn't even know were out there, I had no earthly idea. So, yeah, I do open that thing occasionally, it's sleep material, but, I'm just playing.
I'm gonna say I have a asterisk to that, but we'll get to items.
You want to?
At the end of the main, there's something related to that, but it's not.
We are getting more than that.
Okay, alright, we're gonna move into the information discussion, item number one, penalty. I hope you were able to eat dinner while you were waiting for us to get to you.
Oh, yes. Good evening.
Hope it was good, I'm starving. Okay, do you want to carry us through, uh, the TIA policy during COVID? And then follow up with the RFATs update on the long-range transportation plan?
Yes, ma'am. Basically, with everything that's going on with COVID, um, you know, our requirements are, we need a, a traffic, uh, transportation impact analysis to be conducted, but part of the way to do a TIA, you have to get traffic counts. And school needs to be in session, so since school was not in session, and now in August, they, you know, decided about remote learning and having modification, we decided to, um, update and have a new policy to kinda, um, look at the, the traffic volumes and the patterns, since there's gonna be a, a different type of schedule for schools. So, TIA's are still required in the Town of Fort Mill, but this, um, new policy provides a, a temporary alternative method to capture the traffic counts. Um, York County is also doing this, I also, um, ran this with SCDOT. And, and basically, we're allowing, if there were existing traffic counts, um, not more than five years old, that they could, um, provide that in their TIA, and it would be some type of historical growth rate that our consultant would, um, do case by case. Um, if there wasn't, um, say, that there was no traffic counts, um, five years or less, we are basically, um, allowing new counts to be utilized, but they would have to have a twelve percent growth factor. And this new policy is just for the time being of the COVID pandemic and the situation with, um, not being able to collect traffic counts because school is not at a hundred percent, um, normal, um, schedule.
Penalty, because it is a temporary, um, policy, does it have to be voted on by the Planning Commission and then by council?
I, I, I'm not sure about that, I don't think so, um, because this is an internal policy, um, but I would, you know, I'll ask Mr. McAfee still on, um, if that's something that needs to be done.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing, but I think an internal policy that affects the very thing that council votes on from growth and acceptance for the types of things that were required TIA, I would like to think that policy comes through us.
Yes, and so we're not eliminating the requirement, but we're providing an alternative method of collecting data for the traffic counts.
Hey, this is, this is Chris, i- i- it's not a change in, in policy per se, it's more of an adaptation of how we are interpreting that policy and how we are implementing that policy, given the restrictions of COVID and given the weird way that we have to do things, uh, during COVID.
I, I, I love you to pieces, but I disagree with you, it is a change or an altering of a policy. Policies come from council.
Temporary, it's a temporary policy.
It is a policy. The other question would be, what's the timing for the completion of the COVID-19 TIA policy? So are we going to wait till schools are at 100% to go back to normal?
I, I'm afraid so, and, and at that point, at this point, we don't know when that, if, if we will go 100%. As we all know, it has been up and down, um, throughout the, the COVID-19 pandemic of different ways of doing business.
So to me, the policy should have some language in it that does refer to 100% capacity or until further review by staff, council. It, it's got to have a, when does it go back to normal clause?
Well, we do, we, we do, the only thing that we have in the memorandum is this policy will end when planning staff determines that traffic volumes and patterns have returned to an acceptable, acceptable level of normalcy, enabling new traffic counts to be able to be reflected correctly.
I'm still not sure I have resolution to my concern that we can take an existing policy and internally make a shift in how we read it that applies to the criteria that's required by the applicants that come before us without us approving the policy. I mean, I'm being picky here, I'm sorry.
And that's fine.
No, no, and, and, you know, in our requirements for the traffic counts, you know, they have to be less than a year old. So like, for some of them, like I have a couple of traffic studies right now that we have data that's been, you know, within the year, but then there's some intersections that we don't have data. So in our actual regulation, in our code, you know, the, what the dilemma that we're going to be facing is where we don't have data within the year, and because of now school not being, not being able to co- collect accurate traffic counts, we needed some type of modifications. But in the actual ordinance, you know, it talks about data is good within a year. So, I mean, if, if you would like for us to go back and do a tax amendment, um, to put some type of language, then yes, I will have to go through Planning Commission, um, and then come back to council with two readings, but this was just something, we, we've had a lot of developments that are kind of stalling, um, because there is data for within the year, but there's cer- certain intersections that there's no data. And so by the regulations that we have today, we can't accept the TIA.
And, and please hear clearly, I'm not questioning the validity of the decision to do so. I am merely talking about a process that keeps us consistent with policymaking, and I think policymaking, even if you label it an interpretation, is still policymaking. It has to come through the appropriate channels, in my opinion. I don't hear any of the rest of you chiming in, so I might be the only one.
I chimed in, um, and agree. Anytime it says policy, it feels like to me it's to come before council, even if it is temporary during COVID.
Everything else.
How can we get a metric, planning staff, Chris, Penelope, when, I mean, in this temporary, what we're talking about, now, when there's not, just the numbers aren't there? I understand, I mean, of those troubled intersections, would we just, how would we fill in that gap? I just want to know.
There's a ratio, a percentage, that, um, they're, they are including to pick up the numbers that are not out there. A 12% growth factor is what, um, SCDOT and surrounding towns that were looking at this dilemma with the numbers not, the traffic counts not being there, a, a normal condition. That was the determination of just having a 12% growth factor.
Does that mirror our growth factor?
No, it does not, this is because for new counts.
Our growth is more than 12% now, over five years?
I think.
They're looking at per intersection. It's trips based. Right. So, over where I live, they put in a new housing development, then it would go, they'd count, take the average count over the past three years and then bump it by 12% to try to get the real numbers, or would it be if, as opposed to like over where we all are at, on Dobie, it would be a totally different number.
We have to extrapolate based on COVID as to what it might be, given the, the planning data that shows the growth, I get that. And it's unfair to require someone to get a TIA based on no information. They would never get approval, I get that. I, I'm fine personally with the, the changing to fit the situation.
You just wanted to run through the planning?
I do.
Wanted to go through planning, is that what you said?
Mm-hmm, and then to us, because to me, it is a policy change.
Well, this might be, I mean, to the, I mean, this might be something we have to keep on the books for, I mean, unfortunately, this might not be the only scenario like this that we have to deal with in the future, you know, next, next year might be COVID-20.
Twin-demic, I believe is what's next.
Or whatever.
I think that's what I read, twin-demic is, is in the hang, I think, I think that's what's next.
So what do we need to do for this action item?
Well, it's not an action item, it's an information discussion. Penelope, Davy, I would prefer that it take that route, but council can, if you have a differing opinion, speak now.
I agree, I'd rather have it written, that written out so that everybody knows who you is, right out of the gate, they can come back and dispute that when they do go to planning, and say, well, I called Penelope's scale that she said we could use, and planning was like, what?
So, uh, you know, and, and I, I'm not 100% sure how York County went through the policy, because they adopted a similar policy. This memorandum, just for council to know, went out on August 24th, um, to the development and traffic engineering community, um, because we were pretty much the last ones, um, to, to come up with some, something, um, a modification of the TIA. So I don't know, um, if we do go back through the process, um, do I need to void this policy and put a hold on some of the TI projects that we have received in the past three weeks?
Barry, uh, this sounds legal to me, because if we are approving projects under one system, and then we make a change and make it official, could you help?
Mayor, I think, uh, Mr. Mack had to leave, leave the meeting.
Oh, is this the day he needed to bug out early? Uh, Penelope, what do you think?
Well, I hear what you're, I mean, I'm hearing what you're saying, um, that you all prefer to, for it to go back through the, the process to make sure, since we don't know how long COVID will, will be, you know, um, the situation around to obtain traffic counts, um, the memorandum, you know, went out three weeks ago, um, because staff believed that we could do something in, like an internal policy, um, for a temporary policy. I just, to be, you know, transparent with the community that we've already sent this policy, you know, you know, I don't know if I could ask, is it okay? I know there's three to four projects, can they proceed, or until we get, um, the tax amendment through Planning Commission and, and Town Council? I, I don't know, that's the legal question that, unfortunately.
I know we did a memorandum, but I think it's very sad that this is a policy change, it is. I don't care if it's for two weeks, it's a policy change. That's not something we get to do because we think we know internally we should. That's not how that works.
I don't think, I, I don't think by law is, is a policy that we're, we're figuring to execute this procedure, but what we did, uh, Penelope met with the county, um, Penelope, you submitted to the Department of Transportation as well.
Yes, and then our consultant, as we work with Kim Lee Horn, um, you know, it was brought to our attention what York County was doing and, and the issue of, you know, and then we had economic development, um, you know, issues going on in the region that we needed to come, um, with some type of temporary policy plan for the TIA.
And.
So we knew a while back.
Yeah, we were, we've been meeting, or we wanted to reach out to the other entities in the area to find out what they were doing, um, with this, so.
Are the people, are the people, are the people that we would need to go back to, are they coming before us in a development plan, or are they just simply development that fits the criteria and they don't have to come before us?
No, there, there is, there's, um, you know, a couple of them are, they, they won't, like a couple won't, they're commercial projects, you know, they have the zoning, they're just going to have to go through the commercial appearance review process, um, but there, there is, um, one that is, they're trying to be annexed into the town, they like to, um, request an annexation to the town of Fort Mill. So we told them, we are not accepting any annexation applications until a, a TIA is, um, conducted and approved. And then we have some other ones that were, um, I think we have another one as well that would be a modification to an MXU. So there's, there's the four of them, two that are not going to come, and two that will come through you.
Okay. Council, what say you?
Say we get legal advisement first thing tomorrow to find out if what we've done was within our abilities, or if we need to fix and come before planning and council. Especially if we've got uncertainty of what we've done is correct.
Davy, what do you, that's ours.
Mayor, this is an information discussion item, we can reach out to Barry tomorrow, check to the entities, find out how they, um, what the process, find out if it is, if it legally has to be voted on by council. Because I think, you know, it's, it's, we're calling it a policy, it can call it a procedure, it's, you know, what, we just make sure what we're doing is legal, and we, in fact, it feel like we're doing anything illegal by making, again, interpreting what the guidelines are for the TIA.
Okay.
And so we, again, we didn't go out on our own to do this, we met with other entities, York County, the Sacramento Department of Transportation, and to find a solution so that these developments or these, you know, would not stunt and stop any growth coming in town.
The result's right, I, I mean, as far as.
Well, this was brought to us by the Economic Development Group.
So, so we're not, we're not changing the actual policy of, you're still going to have to give it a traffic count, we're just adjusting how you can come up with the numbers to fulfill the traffic count.
That is correct.
That is correct.
waiver for having to give a TIA.
It's not a waiver, yeah, but it is a change of the criteria for the TIA.
Right. So.
Another part, I mean, I hate to keep bringing it up, but we don't have it in writing here, so, you know, all we're going off of is Penelope's presentation, so we're not reaching Penelope out ourselves.
Do you have? Do you have the memo?
No.
No.
No. Not in our pocket.
Cause that, okay. I did send it, um, would you like for me to send it to you again?
Information discussion item, we can provide all of this tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
With what, what our findings are through Barry.
Okay, thank you. Our, uh, RFATs update for long-range planning, transportation plan?
Yes, ma'am, um, just for council to know, um, myself, I, I serve on the RFAT technical committee, and the mayor serves, um, she's also the chairwoman for the poli, the RFATs policy committee, and every seven years, um, the RFATs, uh, updates the long-range transportation plan. And in this plan, there's this list of unfunded projects, um, for the long-range transportation, um, plan for basically new alignments and road widening, and also intersection improvements. And so David Hooper, um, at the last technical meeting, um, requested that each jurisdiction go back and look at this list and, and, um, pick five of the highest priority lists based on our current operational data. And so, um, in front of you, I, I believe you have, that I had submitted, um, road widening and new alignments are, um, the first, um, highest priority that I, um, sent to David Hooper, and he will then forward it to the policy, um, for discussion in, sometime in October, but I wanted council to know Fort Mill's five, um, priorities. Um, the first one is the US 21 widening Sutton Road, Sprat Street to Springfield Parkway. The second one is Gold Hill Road, Springfield Parkway, and that is from I-77 to, um, South Carolina 160, you know, five lanes with sidewalks and shared use bikes, bike lanes. The third one is Fort Mill Parkway, US 21 to Holbrook Road. The fourth one is Fort Mill Parkway from Holbrook Road to South Carolina 160, and the fifth one is Sutton Road from Six Baxter Crossing to US 21. And a- as you notice, these are just sort of like a loop to have, um, improvements for people to be able to get back onto I-77 through, through our town. The next criteria, the next category is intersection improvements, and the first hi, um, highest priority list for Fort Mill is South Carolina 160 from Steel Bank Streets and Dobie's Bridge Road. The second one is South Carolina 160 at Springfield Parkway. The third one is Dobie's Bridge Road, Nims Lakes Road, and Williams Road. The fourth one is Dobie's Bridge Road, Dobie's Bridge Park, and the last one is the Old Nation Road at intersection at North White Street. And all of these are just, um, congestion and safety issue, um, concerns that we believe that this needs to be, um, the top five, um, highest priority for the intersection improvements for the town of Fort Mill. I, I forwarded this information, um, to David Hooper, and like I said earlier, you know, he's compiling every jurisdiction, and then he will present, um, this to the policy committee sometime in October for discussion.
Okay, our next RFATs meeting is Friday, the 24th, 26th, I can't remember which one it is, but it's that week. And I haven't seen the agenda for it, so I don't know if it'll be on that or not.
And mayor, no, um, I, I talked to David Hooper, you know, it, it, I think it might be further discussion, um, in October, is what I was told.
Okay, alrighty. And I'm not disagreeing with the order that you have on, but just a understanding, did we pull these from whatsoever Pennies projects that haven't been approved? How did we come up with the list?
Well, this li, well, first of all, this list was provided from, you know, the, the unfunded transportation needs, um, and so we just looked, um, Chris and I, um, you know, we looked through to see, um, how overall effective we could, um, you know, help the congestion and, um, safety concerns, um, and other projects that were happening, um, with the Pennies for Progress to be able to benefit, you know, the town of Fort Mill, but also York County, since it is part of the Pennies for Progress.
And, and to further that, this list is so long-running, uh, long-range planning for RFATs can be 30, 40 years, so many of the projects that aren't addressed just simply move forward and are adjusted based on traffic counts, um, accident counts, reports by the municipality, um, DOT counts, there's a lot of information that goes into what's selected on that list, and then the order, uh, that Chris and Penelope looked at, um, we kind of are agreeing, you know, to the order.
The one note that I don't see represented that I have concern with is with all the expansion that Lancaster's been putting in to, what is that, 160? Um, you're going to have four-lane roads all the way up to the bridge, and then it comes to two lanes when it comes to us, that intersection there with Hensley Road is already kind of a nightmare. We do have a light, which I know the North White Street doesn't have a light, so at least that we have that, but I just want to be sure that that's on the radar somewhere. I don't remember seeing.
It's way out because of visual place. It's way out because of its replacement being amazingly expensive. And that one's not that old.
Is it not on one of the Pennies lists, 160 expansion to Sugar Creek?
160 is on several lists, but to Lisa's point, that bridge over Sugar Creek is not that old. It's no different than the bridge we have on the bypass that for us to four-lane the bypass, that bridge has to be reconstructed. And the cost is astronomical. The, the projects that have bridges are the worst money-wise. Any further questions for Penelope? Penelope, thank you so much for your presentation and your hard work.
You're welcome, mayor and council. Thank you.
All right. Information discussion item number three, Sixth Annual Fort Mill Scarecrow Crawl and Fall Maze in Veterans Park, Jotana.
Hey, how are y'all?
I want to thank you for your hard work on the farmer's market. It has been a resounding hit. Thank you for all the hard work on that.
Thank you. It's been fun and I, I think it's a great community event, and the community seems to be really enjoying it, so that's great news. So, I wanted to talk to you about the Sixth Annual Scarecrow Crawl. This year, we plan for it to line the streets in downtown Fort Mill, and all the scarecrow entries that we get are from individuals and schools and businesses and organizations, churches and more. And the actual Fort Mill Scarecrow Crawl happens October the 5th through the 31st. And the scarecrows will line our downtown area, including Main, White, Tom Hall and Claiborne Streets and Millstone and Veterans Park. And the public can visit downtown Fort Mill, October the 5th through the 31st, and take a stroll to view all the scarecrows and be sure to visit all of our shops and restaurants while they are here, because many of them have their own scarecrows in the event as well. And a lot of our local businesses actually sponsor the event, so we are excited about that. And if you would like to create a scarecrow, the details and registration forms can be found on our Town of Fort Mill website, And registration for a scarecrow is, the deadline for that is this Friday, September the 18th. And we do have a scarecrow decorating contest, and we have a panel of judges that vote on that. And then the public is invited to vote on a People's Choice Award, which is, will be determined by most likes on Facebook, and we'll be posting on our social media about those contests. And this year, we are very excited to add a hay maze that is going to be placed in Veterans Park at the opposite end of the fall market along the Claiborne Street side. And so, the public will be allowed to, to visit this hay maze from, during the month of October. And so, and for both of these events, of course, we'll have social distancing guidelines placed throughout the route for these events. And, and we just ask the public to follow the safety guidelines for COVID while they are visiting. And we have also planned some online events for the month of October. We're going to have a fall in Fort Mill photo contest, a pumpkin hunt, and then a pumpkin decorating online contest, as well as a Name That Halloween Movie trivia contest. And we're going to have a little fun game. Guess how many at our Fort Mill, Town of Fort Mill, at the Fort Mill Fall Market on Saturdays through November. And we also will be having a Pets and People Halloween costume contest on October the 31st. All those are online events. So, we're just excited to be able to provide some things for the public that's fun and that we feel like they can safely do during this time.
Awesome. That sounds great. Will the hay maze conflict with the farmer's market at all?
No, it's going to be at the opposite end of the fall market, so, you know, people that are actually visiting the market can go to that end and enjoy it, you know, with their kids while they are there or during the scarecrow crawl.
Great.
Is it going to be a waist-level hay bays? I mean, I'm just thinking, again, social distancing. We've got construction going on. Don't want kids getting lost.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't understand, hear your question.
I'm just have some concern about the maze and, and the safety, just with COVID, you know, are we going to have somebody monitoring how many people are in the maze at a time? And, you know, are they like?
Well.
Construction going on at that end as well.
Well, the construction is not happening in the area that we're placing the maze, and we are going to have signage down there reminding people about the COVID guidelines as well.
And it is a very small maze, just really for, for children.
Little kids.
And, um.
Right.
We reached out to the, um, the Greenway, because they typically have a maze, a corner maze, and we didn't want to be in competition. And we're just trying to find another avenue, another opportunity to provide something to outdoors for, for the, um, our citizens and visitors that they could still provide, you know, still meet COVID guidelines and still enjoy the outdoors. So, it's just, but the, uh, the Greenway wasn't very supportive of it. They thought it was a great idea, and, but we didn't want to reach out to them just to make sure they didn't have any problems.
Great. That's awesome. Jotana, thank you as always for your work on all this.
Have we made a decision about Halloween and?
I don't.
The.
I mean, the, the main street activities, I'm assuming.
We're not, we're not moving forward, not planning to move forward any of that.
Okay.
But have we made any kind of official notice?
We have not made an official notice, but the town staff has not planned to, to do that, but it's, we can do that this month. We'll promote it this month.
I'm not saying cancel Halloween. I'm just saying, I heard planned activity on the main street.
Yeah, this would be the, the main, the trick or treat on main.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's the.
Yeah, the town's.
Yeah.
No candy, did you?
It's going to be interesting. All right. Just in keeping with the request earlier in the meeting, before we do any additional detail and adjournment, excuse me, I tickle. Um, we had two items, a request and a change on the minutes. We had ensure that our order is reversed on our next reading for the budget. Why is this happening to me? Excuse me. Uh, I'm good, I think. Oh, thank you. Somebody's throwing stuff over here at me. That's a good thing. Thank you, Larry. So, we had, uh, council item, we had no one show up for the public hearing on the budget. We want the order reversed for the final vote. Shontay agreed to provide millage figures to council later this evening. New business item number three, council had a unanimous vote to defer this to the 28th. Excuse me. I don't have COVID. Business item number four, it was a 6-1 vote in favor of restoring four courts, tearing down two and a half and adding four new ones. Business item number five, we agreed with the allocations as were given to us by the Accommodation Committee. And then the rest of the items were information items with item number one, a commitment to get legal advice on TIA policy changes. So, with that, Mr. Huntley, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
I, I've got two compliments I'd like to pass out. First is the State Highway Department for the way they cleaned up Sprat Street, the shoulders. And also to our own Public Works Department, probably 21. And I noticed on our, uh, notice that goes out, one of the people we notify is a Fort Mill Times. Existence now.
No, sir, they're not, man. But we probably just haven't updated our.
Input.
Yeah, I saw.
I just wanted you to know that I read this.
We'll, we'll have that removed.
I've known that too, but.
Whatever reason, it's not going to come back to us. I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay. Mr. Helms, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
Good.
Mr. Shirey?
I just, uh, want to thank everybody who sent all the good wishes and, and, uh, support to the house when I was going through my surgery. They really appreciate it. I'm glad to be back at work.
We're thrilled with your progress, and I'm glad to know you haven't been hanging off a ladder and trying to do things to defy. Mr. Moody?
This is the first time, I think, we've all been together since March.
It is.
It's good to see y'all. I missed everybody.
It is.
The Tooth Fairy, my teen-year-old, um, lost a tooth the other night, and one he'd been working on that was going to have to be pulled because he has braces. And so, started, um, man, this has got a bracket on it. Tooth Fairy's going to probably give you a little more money for this. Tooth Fairy just didn't come that night, and, um, I was eating breakfast the next morning and he comes downstairs. He said, I hate COVID. I cannot stand it. I said, what's wrong? He said, the Tooth Fairy wanted to come now because of COVID. Tooth Fairy came last night and he was happy. That tickled me pretty good. I was.
He was just delayed, right? Child's perspective. Miss Seem, so you got anything for the good of the whole?
I was pretty glad when I got to go.
Absolutely.
I think our council's met our deductibles.
We probably have.
It's good.
Yeah, so, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, Davey, I was going to ask, I noticed in our municipal information that we received that we're coming up on time for hometown economic development grants. And there's several things in here that looked of interest. Have we planned for any submissions?
Actually, Mr. Moody made me aware of that last week, and last year we submitted for the wave mine signage. So, we have that application ready to go. We planned it. We had participated in folks winning that award this year.
Okay, yeah, because this is, um, assets, but not limited to publicly owned water and sewer projects, wayfinding signage, place making projects. It sounds like there's several opportunities for us. Deadline for that's the 25th, so that's coming up pretty quickly. Got it printed out if you need it. So, I just wanted to be sure, again, free money. I'll take it.
I just wanted to ask everyone to, uh, travel safely this week. We're supposed to have some pretty heavy rain on Tuesday. The storm system has turned into a category two hurricane. Feel sorry for the people on the coast and people that have family there. They just were hit recently, and that little path just keeps covering us up with, uh, rain and wind. So, please have a safe week and continue to show, um, care for those around you. Thank you for all that you do. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. And a second. Okay, all those in favor, please show a hand. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.